Good evening, we're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. We could all stand, please. With the flag today?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Grace, do you have anyone signed up for delegation this meeting?
No.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just took something out of order here. We're gonna start with the consent agenda. Actually, before we do that, I just wanna make note that we have one school committee member just joining us now. Hello, Mr. Hal Brock.
Thank you.
Mr. Hood will be joining late in the meeting. And we may have Skiles leaving early due to another school commitment that she needs to be attending. So with that, everything listed in the consent agenda was distributed in advance in the meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed before we take a vote? Okay. So then, may I have a motion, please, to approve and accept the items listed in the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no business, old business on tonight's agenda, so we'll move right into new business. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Bailey for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. The first thing we have tonight is I am proud to introduce some of the new staff who were able to make it tonight. We invited them all to the school committee meeting. And we do have a few of them here tonight with us. And I would just ask that whoever is in attendance, if you want to make your way to the podium, I would love it if you could introduce yourselves and your role and maybe a little bit about your background to the committee members, as it's always nice to put a face with a name. So please help yourselves to the podium. I know it's a bad dash.
Hi, how are you? My name is Kim Howard, and I am over at Apona, I'm sorry, that's where my children go. Akushnet Elementary School. I am the instructional coach over there. This is my 23rd year of teaching. I taught in regular education classrooms. I've been a special education teacher. As well as my previous role, I was a literacy coach. And now I'm here as the academic coach. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
You're pleased to meet you.
Welcome.
Hi, hi. My name is Holly Smith. I'm the fifth grade math teacher here. Because in my ninth year teaching, I have taught fourth, fifth, and sixth grade in previous different school districts. And I'm excited to be a part of it too.
Welcome. Thanks to me. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dorian Bryant. I'm the new vice principal at Ford Middle School. Nice to meet you. This is my 27th year in education. Four of those were at Nazarene Christian Academy, and the other 23 were at Keith Middle School in New Bedford, where I was an interim acting VP as well as an English teacher. And I'm very grateful to be here working with your children, the community, and the staff.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Pavel Janova, and I'm the new Ford Middle School health teacher. This is my third year of teaching health. Before, I was a paraprofessional for about eight years. And as you might hear, I'm not from here.
It's a New Bedford accent.
No, it's Rhode Island. No, it's Slovakia. So I'm still referred by the government as an alien. But I don't get offended. I got called worse. What else? I don't know. I don't wanna waste your time.
Well, welcome aboard.
No, I thank you. And I just wanna thank you.
You're not an alien to us.
I wanna thank you to get this opportunity to start a new, the new place. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Welcome. It really is great to put a face with a name. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Take care too.
As I do as well. And I find that new staff just fit right in. And our seasoned staff who have been here welcome them with open arms. And they have so much to offer our district as well. So thank you again. The next thing in your packet is the school physician agreement. That is something that we do each year. And we take a vote on that just to accept the agreement with Dr. Turebetti, who's our physician. Does anybody have any questions about that? So that's just...
Is it mandatory to have a physician?
Yeah. All districts, I believe, do.
Who's in Massachusetts?
Regulations.
Okay. So there has been no changes to the agreements since last year?
No, there's been no change. Nope.
All right. Everything looks straightforward to me. Are there any... If I could request a motion, please, of approval for the school physician agreement?
I'll make motion.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay. Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, is part of that vote, does the committee give me permission to sign that agreement on behalf of the committee?
Yes. Do you have to take a vote?
You have to take a quick one, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
If I could have a motion, please, to allow Dr. Bailey to sign the agreement on behalf of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. As soon as I get that back from Dr. Turebetti, I will sign that. Next, I would like to... Next, I'd like to call Mr. Missler up to present the technology update.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members, Dr. Bailey. Quick updates for you guys. Aspen update, it's data submission time. We do it pretty much all the time. But we are actually three weeks ahead of schedule right now. To give you an idea of the process, there's roughly 56 fields per student times our student body. That gives you an idea of the data that we collect per student. And that has to be correct. So when we submit it up to DESI, they actually have their own dataset that we check. So if they have something that's off than what we have, we have to go through error processing. So I just wanna give a shout out to Kathleen Boran, who's been hard, hot and heavy in this thing. And she's done a fantastic job. And again, we're three weeks ahead of time on this. And she's almost done with E-PIMS. I know I'm throwing her on the spot, but she's almost a month and a half ahead of time on that one. So she's doing fantastic. E-Rate, it's that time of year where we start to fill out our wish list for the E-Rate for this year. Last year, we hit something, I believe it was $181,000 was what we got last year. This year, we're gonna start putting together the needs of the district. And our goal is to get, again, receive that funding. And just for those who are new to E-Rate, E-Rate is a federal fund that provides 60% of our overall 100% cost of a project. So if something costs $1,000, they provide $600 for it. And what we like to do is utilize as much as we're gifted through E-Rate. Copiers. I figured I'd throw this in here to give you guys a taste of what we've been putting in place for systems. We have systems on top of systems to make sure things continue to work in the district. Also, for any staff members that hear this, if you have a problem with a copier, for instance, if you put in a ticket to us or let your front office know, the system should be able to take care of... Let me rephrase that. The copier should be fixed pretty quickly. So the way this works, we have 11 copiers in the district. We have a new vendor, Rico. That's the main vendor. They're a manufacturer, so they have, excuse me, they have a support company right here in town. The requirements on the state bid list, such as quick turnaround time, parts coverages, et cetera, just to be on the state bid list. So what that means is if you're gonna be on the state bid list for technology, you have to have a 98% uptime guarantee. You have to have a response time within 24 hours and a couple other things. So we went through the state bid list to get these guys. The way it works is if the toner in the copier is low, it automatically sends an email out to our staff members, which in this case, our front office, to let them know they need to order toner. We also work with the front office. So if there's a paper jam or whatever, we don't have to wait 24 hours for that copier company to come out. We actually do it in-house as much as possible. So it could be fixed in 30 minutes. And then, if it is down, so say you have a copier that's down, regardless, if it's a parts problem, a toner problem, whatever it is, we have a system called Paper Cut. So teachers can go to any copier they want, tap their badge, and print out whatever print job they have anywhere in the district. That gives you kind of an idea of copiers. So if one part of that fails, we have three other parts to kind of carry, if that makes sense to you guys. District processes. We're all working towards streamlining workflows in the district. One thing the tech department's been doing big time is some efficiencies in our data flow. So to give you an idea, we have a system called ASOP. It's our attendance management system. In the past, the way it worked is if you get a new person in district, someone actually goes in and manually enters in that name. So Patrick Missler would be put in that ASOP system. If I mistype or whatever, then that error stays in that system moving forward. What we're doing in the district is aligning whatever's in these external systems to our Aspen system. So what that means is whatever's in Aspen drives the data for every external system. So if my name is correct in Aspen, it's gonna be correct in every other system. So that's less manual time for any kind of secretary admin, admin assistant putting in data. That means if we have an error in some other system, it starts in Aspen. So if you fix it in Aspen, it'll fix it everywhere else. So the goal, again, is for efficiency and to make sure our data is as clean as possible. And that kind of goes along with all that SIM and E-PM stuff that we do. And we've been doing it along with ASOP or doing it with a few other systems as well. And outside of that, it's business as usual. So if you guys have any questions?
One quick comment. So basically, if staff or anybody's having problems with, let's say, the copiers, as you mentioned here, they just go to the front office? Or can they do something on their own through the computer?
Always go to the front office or put a ticket in as well. We have it all.
So they can put a ticket in on their own?
Yep. That'd be perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. Next, I call Mr. Gary up to present to you our 2023 MCAS results. This is something that we're very proud of, and we continue to be. So we will share those results with you now.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. Okay, so the bottom line is that our accountability ratings increased for both schools in the 2023 school year, 22, 23 school year, and that we outperformed the state in the majority of tests. So tonight, we'll review the accountability rating. And then we'll talk about the performance of the district, the middle school, the elementary school, and compare our district to other area schools. So for the accountability percentiles, this is kind of a comparison that's done with schools across the state that are in like grade bands. So AES would be compared to similar grade band schools, FMS similarly. And it takes into account different indicators, such as achievement and growth, absenteeism, and English language proficiency. And it's on a scale of 1 to 99. AES's accountability rating continues to increase, and they had an amazing accountability rating of 91. And FMS has also incrementatively been going up throughout the years and is at 54.
Can I, can you go back to that for a second, please? So if you look at 2020 and 2021, those are the years of COVID when they weren't doing accountability. But I do wanna stress here, if you look at both schools, where they were in 2018 and where they are in 2023, I think it's amazing that we've continued to progress. Many schools in the state, there's been a lot of learning loss from COVID. So, you know, looking at this, Akushnet has not missed a beat. We have continued to do the work even during COVID. And that shows just by this particular slide here. I just wanted to point that out, that even with COVID years behind us, we're continuing to grow and progress, which is phenomenal. Both schools. I mean, I've not seen the middle school look so good as this year. Go ahead.
And here we have the achievement distribution for across grades 3 through 8. So starting in grade 3 is when students be in taking the MCAS assessments in ELA and math. So this is a comparison of Akushnet student performance in ELA achievement compared to the state. And as you can see, in grades 3 through 8 in ELA, we've outperformed the state.
So we want it, we shoot for the purple and the green, the exceeding and the meeting expectations. And you'll see by the charts that we're above, at least on the last one, we were.
Yes. And also in math. So this is grades 3 through 8 math. And again, Akushnet is outperforming the state in students who are exceeding and students who are meeting expectations.
So the cumulative, sorry, the cumulative sort of performance score of the state is what you mean by that when you say we're outperforming the state?
Yes.
For all grades?
All grades 3 through 8 in math or ELA. And ELA, I should say. Okay, so now we're looking at growth, achievement and growth in ELA. And this is a reflection of grades 4 through 8. Grade 3 is not included in this because what they do for the fourth grade, rate performance, and then measure the amount of growth by students. And on here, Akushnet overall, the district, is in yellow. And Akushnet Elementary School is red. And Albert F. Middle School is in, the Ford Middle School is in green. And the star there is the state. And so what we're looking at is achievement and growth. Now, growth is kind of a typical band of growth would be anywhere between 40 and 60%. And so both of the schools are falling within the typical growth band. The Akushnet Elementary School is on a high average, high average for achievement and for growth.
But being between 40 and 60 is typical growth. It's right where we should be.
Both schools have achieved higher than the state average. That was ELA. This is math. Similar story. The growth is within the typical band. AES is performing at a high average. And both schools outperformed the state. Okay. And now, we're looking at grades 5 through 8. So this is the Ford Middle School. Grades 5 through 8, ELA. FMS outperformed the state in ELA overall. And a greater percent of students were meeting or exceeding expectations than last year in grades 5 through 8.
Do we have any new curriculum that's going on right now in ELA for any of the grades?
We did have a new writing curriculum last year. So that's in its second year.
So hopefully, we'll see even more of them as the years go on.
Right. Okay. Now, we're looking at grades 5 through 8 math. FMS outperformed the state. And overall, a greater percent were meeting or exceeding expectations than last year compared to our district, our school, Ford Middle School last year. Okay. And now, fifth grade science. Fifth grade science outperformed the state. And similarly, eighth grade science also outperformed the state.
Do we have new curriculum in science?
We have new curriculum.
Last year?
This is the first year. This is this year. And that curriculum is grades 6 through 8.
So in a couple of years, we should see better results.
Hopefully, that's the goal. We're looking at piloting a new performance, like a performance evaluation in science for eighth grade. The state is piloting it. So this year, we would like to try the pilot because it looks like that's what's coming down the pipeline. And it's more of a performance-based assessment and multiple choice and open response. So it will be interesting to see. I'm gonna be attending an information session coming up here soon on that. And with the new science curriculum being so hands-on and performance task-related, we're hoping that the assessment mostly aligns to that.
Do you find that changing things, like every year, a little bit, is gonna hurt us in the testing? Or do you think it's just gonna help everything?
Right. So we don't wanna change every year. We wanna kind of pick some things and stick with it.
Okay. So we're still picking things?
So we had Amplify Science is what we had in years past. I think we had that for three years now. And what we weren't really seeing was great results, both on assessments that we were doing in-house and also our MCAS scores. We were also getting a lot of feedback from students. That was the curriculum that was very heavy, computer-based. And the kids were on the computer a lot of the time in science class. And we wanted them a little more engaged and engaging in that scientific process. So typically, we wouldn't even wanna switch curriculum every three years. But a lot of the feedback that we received from student feedback surveys, the groups that Dr. Bailey and I had met with, just it was a resounding, you know, kept coming in all different directions that there was very low student engagement in that area.
This is the first year with that in science?
Yes.
I'm just gonna add on some.
And that may, I mean, there may be, there may be growing pains with that when it comes to the MCAS because...
It's new.
It's new. But hopefully, I mean, what we're seeing already is just a huge difference in engagement. The students are really into it. Our teachers are into it. They're buying in. They're acting, you know, as scientists or doing experiments. It's really amazing. So we're hoping to see a difference there.
I'm getting ahead of myself. Third grade reading scores.
Oh, that's actually my next slide.
Okay. All right.
Yes. Well, this is actually grades 3 and 4, ELA. And so, grades 3 and 4 at AES outperformed the state.
Yeah, it's a form of state, but it looks like there's a slight dip.
A slight dip.
With meeting expectations and exceeding expectations.
Yep. 1% in each.
Yep.
So the data here is kind of falling a little bit flat. So we're having a look at that. The grades 3 and 4, teachers are really looking closely at the writing piece. The principals are working with the teachers to really examine the writing.
Do we have a lot of new teachers in 3 and 4?
No. Last year, we did not. The grade 4 class last year was that really large class that's coming through. So there were a few additional teachers on the team. But I, I wouldn't say that that was really a factor. But we're really looking closely at the writing and trying to build in what are the writing expectations. The principals are working closely with, actually, they're gonna be working closely with each grade level from K to 4 and looking at what are the expectations? What do we want students to leave each grade level being able to do? And then, we're looking at grades 3 and 4 math. Again, outperforming the state, a tiny dip. And the students who are meeting expectations, in general, the data's kind of falling very similar to what we've seen, what we saw last year. And I would say that this number is still kind of outperforming what we had seen in years past in the district. Okay. And now...
This was something that the committee had asked for.
Yep. It's kind of a lot to look at, but we took some areas, schools that are nearby, Fairhaven, New Bedford, Marion, Mattapoisett, Rochester, Dartmouth, Westport. And we compared our performance to the schools in our area. And also, there's a column there to compare the state's performance. And so this is elementary school, grades 3, ELA in math, and grade 4, ELA in math. And the white column next to Akushnet is the mean of all of the area schools. And Akushnet Elementary School outperformed the area mean most of the schools in most subjects and the state.
Any questions about that one?
That one's fantastic. I think really the grade 4 math really is... Okay.
Okay. All right. And then, the next slide is grades 5 through E. So we used all the same comparisons for the towns nearby. We're, we've outperformed in most, most assessments in most grade levels. We're looking closely into the grade 7 and 8 mathematics and...
In ELA.
In ELA. But we did see a lot of evidence with the writing, the new writing program, that a lot of our writing scores have improved at the middle school. And that was just in year one. So we're continuing that program, the SRSD writing program, and looking just to continue to grow from where we're at. And then, finally, this is just the comps of grades 3 through 8, area comps in ELA math and science. And overall, we're outperforming the area mean and the state.
And I would say that's something to be proud of. And it's a whole team effort with the teachers, the administrators, the principals working with them. You know, they work so hard, not just in front of the students and in the classrooms, but during their meeting times, they're analyzing data, trying to pinpoint, you know, root causes. So it's a real testament to the hard work that's going on within the district. So I wanna thank Mr. Gary, as well as our principals and all of the teachers for all of the work that they're doing.
This, I just left that there for your reference. It's the percent of students at each achievement level. And that's a whole lot to go over. But basically, these are the numbers that we just reviewed. So both AES and FMS continue to increase their accountability ratings. Overall, we outperformed the state in achievement in ELA and math and science. AES outperformed the state in growth and achievement. FMS slightly underperformed compared to the state in growth. And we outperformed the state in achievement in ELA and math. Questions?
We're moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is great.
So we looked at some next steps for, you know, what are our next steps? So we wanna provide interventions for identified students. We'll continue to do that. We're examining data on a regular cycle with educators. We're examining data on a regular cycle with educators. And teachers are really making data-informed decisions. Every conversation that I see them in, in their planning times, in their meeting times, that's a huge focus. We'll continue to provide ongoing professional development in implementation of different, our new curriculum that are all curriculum. And we'll continue to follow our strategic plan. We will, um, examine our approach to lesson planning in terms of the rigor and complexity of all tasks. We're making sure that the, uh, teachers are using the district-approved curriculum. And that they're using the assessments and kind of following our pacing guides that we're, that we have. And we'll continue to monitor and communicate the importance of school attendance to families and students.
We had discussion during budget time of moving a math coach or a coach from the elementary school to the middle school. How did all of that go and do you see that making a difference for next year? Like, how many coaches do we have in the middle school now?
So what we have now is we have one full-time coach at the middle school and one full-time coach at the elementary. And they're coaching in all subject areas. And it's great, but they're very busy.
No, I know about the.
The interventionist I think you're talking about. And I believe we're still trying to hire for that, so that has not happened yet.
So there's still another person that we're gonna be getting in the middle school?
No, I think that person has moved over to the middle school. I think the elementary school has an opening for an interventionist.
We have a reading specialist at the middle school. We now have a reading interventionist at the middle school. That's new. And she's, yeah, she's got a full caseload that she's working with. And then math is an open position currently at the middle school. Yes, and actually at the elementary school.
Two places open?
Yes.
That's what we talked about, right? Two people at once? We talked about having one, right?
Oh, well, we didn't add, it's not a new position, but we do have an empty position right now for a math interventionist at the elementary level. It's not a new position, but it is a vacant position. Yes.
Alright, well hopefully everybody will.
Yeah, once we're fully staffed, I think that'll be really great, yeah. But our coaches have stepped in. They helped to do some of the beginning-of-the-year math assessments for the elementary school. So the teachers, actually, I was in a meeting today with the principals and the grade one team, and they were looking at math and, um, the math details data, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, all of your hard work. And again, thank you to the team, the entire team at Akushnet, because it would be possible without every single person who works for Akushnet other schools. But of course, we will never be satisfied until it's a hundred percent of children meeting or exceeding expectations. So that's why we continue with all of this work to really drill down to root causes and figure out how to continue moving all children to the next level. One thing I just wanna add to the agenda is last meeting, we had talked about the school committee protocols. And you had said that perhaps we'd vote on them tonight unless anybody had any changes. So that would be just something I'm going to question if there's any changes and if you still wanted to take the vote on that tonight.
So we can take the vote tonight or if we wanna, we all feel like we can take a bit of a no-serve vote? We can hold on?
We postpone to the next meeting.
Absolutely, I agree with that. Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, that's all I have for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bailey. Then we will, um, Mr. McIntyre, you can join us for the manager's report.
Chairperson Downing, School Committee, thank you for your time tonight. Jump right into it. You know, not to glaze over the budget, which is most important to me, but everything sort of status quo with the budget, so nothing really to report back there. As you heard, we have some vacancies that are providing us with a little bit of savings and wiggle room throughout the year, but otherwise, you know, we're on track. We haven't TV'd very much at all, if any, from our originally planned budget. So, you know.
At this time, we can begin our high school presentation.
We will keep, uh, heading in that direction as we progress through the school year. Facilities, so a little update on our new roof over at AES. That doesn't feel so new anymore, but it is. We just had our nine-month warranty walkthrough with the entire team next door. What that was, was to ensure that everything still looks good and is in place to secure our warranty and move ahead. You know, notes were taken, items were pointed out. There are things to be addressed, you know, by the, uh, construction team that will be free of charge, a part of the scope of the project as is already, which we're still planning out right now. But that, that's really the last steps. Then we'll submit our last MSBA request to, to MSBA, go through the final audit, close that out for good. So there's still progress there to be made, but you know, it's, it's really in the home stretch now. Small win for us boilers at both schools, which is crucial to our winter and our heating. They're taken apart, they're inspected, a fast inspection. You know, we've identified some inefficiencies in that system that exist that we're bringing in vendors to assess the situation to see if we can build some efficiencies to reduce those heating fuel costs in the winter that, you know, crushed our budget last year, in my opinion. So we have eyes on that and, you know, we'll hope to make some progress there. One other small win, which.
Did I just ask about those original boilers in the school? Like, how old are those?
Um, that's a good question. And I do, I don't know the answer to that, but I can get that for you. I wanna say they were replaced in the early two thousands, to be honest. But don't quote me on it. I'll, I'll get you more information for the next meeting. Over the summer, um, the school building principals, the facility staff, myself, we all met in a room together to, to see how we could streamline the classroom and office space cleaning process. You know, what could teachers help out with, uh, at the end of the school day to expedite the process for custodians so that they could get in and out of rooms and clean, you know, more rooms i- in the span of a shift. So we came out with a checklist for everyone's buy-in. We printed, laminated, laminated, put those checklists up in almost every classroom at this point. And we're gonna see how it goes. Again, it's gonna streamline the process. And we have been short-staffed in the custodial department that hopefully this is gonna allow us to get in and out of rooms quicker, uh, more efficient, still the same level of the cleaning. So thank you to the teams that were involved in that. And thank you to the, to the faculty for cooperating. Food service, um, so you can see in front of you, I, I charted out the meal patterns a little differently for this report. You know, I'll play with this throughout the year as it goes to see which one sticks. But big picture, breakfasts, um, in September were up twenty-six percent when compared to breakfasts in September of 2022. Lunch was down slightly, about two percent. But we expect those numbers to increase, uh, or at least maintain the levels of last year. As you know, we continue to make changes in that department as far as menu items, ingredients, ordering, things like that. So I, I think this is all, um, a factor of some of those changes coming into play. Similarly, with our goals that we outlined last June, we continue to put together some documents that we are waiting to present to you once complete. But we've taken a big chunk of, uh, to-dos out of the inventory count between the two schools of the equipment. We're gonna actually get their replacement costs for, if we were to buy the next year, this year and next year, year after, three, four, or five years down the road. So we can kind of paint that picture for you to see the cost benefit of buying now, later, spreading it out over a cycle. It's a lot of work, but we're getting that together. We're actually really excited about it. We're, we're learning a lot about our equipment, the cost of things in that department. And quite frankly, it's a focus that should have taken place before now, but we're glad to be getting to it, to get some new equipment in there and to get a process to turn this equipment over and stay up to date. Another small win for, you know, our students in particular is this, this past September, we focused on food allergies quite a bit. More specifically, some accommodations surrounding gluten-free items. One, one situation we, you know, our, uh, food service director met with the parent and student service director to talk about what sort of options we have and how we can map this out for the student. And we came up with a menu, um, that we actually could offer to these individuals that are considered disabled by the state. It's a disability, um, with gluten-free. And we went above and beyond, and like I said, we, we made them a menu. Most schools say, hey, take a salad or do this, and this is what you get every day. If you don't like it, bring in your own lunch. We actually are giving them options. In addition, we purchased, um, a countertop oven for both schools to be able to cook those items separate from, uh, our non-gluten items to, to avoid cross-contamination. So though we don't have a large population right now that are considered gluten-free, it does accommodate the few, and, and we're proud of that progress. So, um, again, that was a nice little win in that department. And then last but not least, transportation. So September of the year that I joined, so last year, uh, we had a nice bus meeting with Ameral and the bus drivers. And I loved the idea, you know, um, a lot of good talking points were brought to tables to hear discussions and vantage points from the bus drivers versus admin versus, you know, the dispatcher. So we did that again this September, and it was a great meeting. You know, we're, we're getting more aligned with our expectations and the behavior and the safety on the buses. And the bus drivers have been following through with, you know, our asks and our expectations. And we continue to navigate, you know, those changes, but again, so far, so good. One thing that was important too, and I wanna publicly apologize to families, was there was a day in September where one of our buses did not show up. A substitute was not found for the bus. We handled it internally, but at the end of the day, it was unacceptable. There was no bus. Many of the families, I think all, ninety-nine point nine percent of students were picked up by their families, um, because there was no transportation. And again, I just wanna thank them for that cooperation. It's not acceptable by anyone here in the district. And we've reached out to the bus company and make sure that that doesn't happen again. And that really does it for my resistance to the report. So any questions or comments?
Just in regards to the meeting with Ameral, was there any commitment to keep the lines of communication open? We have periodic meetings or as needed, how would we address anything?
Yeah, so that really wasn't addressed, but between, you know, us, the community and yourselves, I talk to the dispatcher from Ameral, you know, multiple times a week, whether it's bus changes or what can we do better, or what's not working, or do we need to rearrange this route, or that route was late and this bus was early? So we're, we're in frequent communications, and I have a lot of faith that the dispatchers and frequent communication with their drivers, that there is good, you know, uh, communications around everything right now. I think in a better place than, you know, we were last year. From their side, they said it's been the best year that they've had so far with us too, so.
It's nice for us. We do this yearly. For us to get together with the bus riders, they all get T-shirts. We have a nice meeting together. We go out and take pictures, so it was a nice morning.
Yeah, and just, I mean, we say everything, it takes a team, you know, there's no, uh, I'm gonna butcher this, there's no you, there's no Akushnet without you. But you know, that extends to our vendors, our, our bus drivers, et cetera. I mean, that's how our kids get to school every day. So to, to have those meetings and make them feel a part of the team and to hear what they have to say, you know, I value that, we value that, um, it's really important to have a successful, you know, relationship and service, so.
And that was really the message for that meeting?
One, uh, chair, uh, one, one observation with Ameral Bus Company is that of course, they keep their equipment in very good shape. And they keep it very clean as compared with some other bus companies that operate in the whole area. So I was gonna make a note that I, that I always say, when I had, you know, had grand buses, was that the, uh, a clean bus is also a safer bus. And, uh, so, so I, I think they, they meet the bill, uh, you know, that criteria very much so. So I just wanted to pass that along publicly then.
And just to add to that, I think, you know, most of our fleet, none of the buses are, I think the oldest bus is three years old. But it is in our contract that they can only use equipment X amount of years old. I believe it's six that's in our contract. So we do control that to some extent.
Thanks, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I will open it up to our school committee members. If there's anyone who has any thoughts to share, just to name. Alright, seeing none, I do wanna point out a number of communications and additional information that's in your packet. You can read it in your leisure. You do have executive sessions this evening.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Sorry?
Excuse me, if I could just point out under communication and information, we did add three pieces of communication. And what we will do is put them on next month's agenda. But I just wanted to make sure that you were aware. But one is just a thank you letter for the organization, Why Not Appear, for the backpacks, the quarterly reads report, and a memo that I had written that I wanted to share with you, um, to staff. So again, those will formally go in the agenda next month, but it was important to me that you were aware of them now.
Thank you. So we do have an executive session this evening. I do wanna point out the first item on our executive session related to the matter of Ameral Bus Company versus Akushnet Elementary School, document two-two-seven-three-CB-zero-zero-zero-one-two. One of the tables this evening, so we'll not be discussing it. We'll be discussing in executive session, the approval of minutes from September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, executive session. Those are not to be released. Votes may be taken. And also to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect here to safety and security of staff and students. We will not be returning after executive session. So with that, I would welcome a motion to adjourn our school committee's meeting. And all those favorites will be on the call.
Yes.
This is Dawn. This is Hockra.
Yes.
This is Cordera.
Yes.
And this is Dawn.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And our next regular school committee meeting will be held in the library here on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, at five thirty. Thank you.